Go ahead and get started. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the digital regular meeting for the Daily City Library Board of Trustees for July 21st, 2020. Before we get started, I will read the COVID-19 announcements for public meetings. Pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N2520, members of the Daily City Library Board and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via live stream and submit comments through the live stream website and/or submit public comments via email prior to the public meeting. To submit a comment in writing, please email libraryboard@dailycity.org and write public comment in the subject line. In the body of the email include the item number and/or title of the item as well as your comments. All comments received by 4:00 PM will be emailed to the library board members and included as an add to packet on the city's website prior to the meeting. Those comments received after 4:00 PM will be added to the record and shared with the library board members for the public meeting. Persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the Department of Library and Recreation Services as soon as possible prior to the meeting. Okay, so shall we stand and say the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. May we have our director's report?
Absolutely. Good evening, President Logarta, members of the Board of Trustees. At our last meeting, the board directed staff to draft a statement in support of Black Lives Matter. And I believe all of you have had a chance to have a peek at that. And you know, it's during these times when we're all social distancing, it's it's hard to gather staff all together to have a regular discussion about it, but it's certainly something that circulated among library staff. And as a starting point, we used a statement that was issued by the American Library Association and kind of put Daily City's spin on it. And I'll go ahead and read it. And what we're looking for tonight is definitely some input from the Board of Trustees. We're hoping this is a Board of Trustees' statement as much as a library staff statement. Since good. Hello there, Alex. Anyway, so yes, it originated with the board. We would like, you know, the board to take ownership and usher this through too. I'll go ahead and read it unless somebody else wants to.
May I say something before we read it?
Yes, yes.
Now, so one thing to consider trustees, as you know, they have come up with the Black Lives Matter statement. Whether we endorse it and want to add to it and whether we want our our statement to be the exact same, so it's us as a library as a whole, or do we want to come up with our own? So that's something to kind of marinate and think about.
Thank you, President Logarta. And again, this this is a draft. This this hasn't been ratified or anything, so it's a living document. I'll go ahead and read it. The Daily City Public Library stands with the black community to affirm that black lives matter. The recent horrifying murders of George Floyd, Amon Arbery, Breonna Taylor, and too many other black men and women brutalized and deprived of their human rights have moved the nation and the world to demand change. We pledge to educate ourselves about racial injustice, to reexamine our library programs, services, policies, and practices, and find ways to improve and to better advocate for justice, equality, and equity for all. Libraries are for everyone. The library is a place for members of our community to feel safe, to learn, and to grow. The foundation of public library services is our commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion in our programs, our services, and our collections. It is insufficient to eliminate discrimination and inequities. We must, in our words, and especially our actions, build and sustain systems and support for racially quality, for racial equity. We will seek out and root racial and social equity barriers in library programs, services, policies, and practices. We will continue to create and maintain an environment of diversity, inclusion, and respect. We will strive to reach and engage disenfranchised people in the community. We will continue to build a partnership to address community challenges. We aim to cultivate true and lasting transformation. We join with those who share our commitment to a just society that stands firmly against racism and prejudice. So that is the draft statement for your consideration and you know, reject, add, endorse, support, add to it. Hoping to have some discussion among the board members at this point.
Yeah, I'm still I'm still sitting with it a little bit, although I appreciate. I really appreciate the centering of like the purpose of libraries in the community because I I for me like when I when I heard about this, that's really what I was thinking about. Because we know that libraries are such a critical community space, like a central space to build those. And my first edit would be at the top, too many other black men and women. If we can change that to people to include non-binary folks or queer and trans folks who are also impacted by the system.
Any other comments, feedback?
I kind of don't know.
It's a heavy subject to discuss.
Yeah.
In this environment, but.
I'm thinking of the, you know, the team members we have that are diverse, the patrons that we have and, you know, the partnerships, who you work with, which is would be like city council and, you know, the library board, so maybe saying something along the lines of we support our team members, we support our patrons. And I know that this is just, I I think, you know, I can fine tune it better if I kind of took a closer look at it. But something along those lines, like of us standing behind our team members, standing behind our patrons, working with the library board, working with city council to address something. Do you guys kind of know where I'm going here?
I, um. Thank you, Mr. Corrine. This is wonderful. And I hear what everybody's saying. I appreciate it, but we're a totally different entity from the council. I think we we should stick to this. I really appreciate it. And also the fact that it's from the it's a it's a to make it uniform with all the other libraries. I I as a person would strongly say we should stick with libraries and not to mingle together with other entities. This sounds beautiful. It says it all. And I, in addition to what Councilwoman Justine, I mean, Board Member Justine was saying that if we add that to it, that will will make it even better, but I like the way how it is. And we should stay with how library, how this is said about libraries and that we should not be entangled with other entities, even though we're all from the same city of Daily City.
Yeah, I was just saying maybe we could list like the partnerships that, you know, help the library, but I understand what you're saying too. But yeah, no, I I think it's really good. I appreciate it. You know, it's such a bold heartfelt statement. And this is a time we're in the midst of like a pandemic and social injustice. We really have to come together and support our communities. So I appreciate this.
If it helps, I don't want to put pressure on the board to to feel that they have to come up with a final product tonight. You know, you can endorse what's before you with with the changes you suggest. You can continue the discussion. You can endorse it and still continue the discussion. It's a living document and like any policy in the library, it's not static forever. You know, we tweak them as as we need. So if that's helping you process the action for tonight.
So when the the library staff took a look at it, we put it in an online space where people could put in their comments and their suggestions, maybe if it would, if you want to work with it, like really work with the words, that would be an option for you.
Have we looked in other libraries and see what they have adopted already, or is this is just a one format straight throughout the all the counties in America?
I I looked at some of our neighboring libraries and, you know, they've all written something that's, you know, very specific to them. I think that a lot, obviously, it's coming from the same place because we share those values as as public libraries. But they're they're not, there's not necessarily a template.
Then I feel that we should vote today that I agree with this one and then was to stick with it.
So what we can do is we can endorse it, but if there are any updates, like Joseph said, there, you know, we can make changes to it as well, and then we can bring it up again on our next meeting. So do I have a motion to endorse the BLM statement that Joseph has provided?
I make a motion.
A second.
Okay, so so right now we'll go ahead and endorse the BLM statement.
I don't think we voted on it. We have we have a motion in a second.
Okay. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you for catching that.
No problem. And before we leave this item too, I wanted to add that I did get a phone call. It was this morning, no, yesterday morning, yesterday morning from the ASME, ASME is the union that represents most of our full-time library staff. And they're taking this issue very seriously, and they don't want just words on a paper to live on a bookshelf somewhere. They want to continue the dialogue. And they wanted to wanted me to share with you that some of the library staff are very committed to keeping this going, and they're hoping to develop, and they actually have developed a anti-racism program that they hope to launch, starting with libraries and and possibly moving on and throughout ASME and and the greater city city employee workforce. I I believe they've started some discussion with Teamsters as well, so that they're all coming from the same place. And it's it's an affirmative positive program to 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 affirm anti-racism. That sounds kind of backwards, but 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 not just put words on a paper, but to actually be engaged in anti-racism. So stay tuned for that. It it's a dialogue among staff. It's not something that the manager or department head will be involved in at all. So Chayla and I will not be participating in that, assuming it comes to fruition. But on the surface of my cover, I had a very brief conversation yesterday. It sounds like a wonderful starting point to keep the dialogue going because you know, the the issue is very much living in our country right now and to ignore it after adopting or endorsing the statement, you know, is not enough. So they want to keep keep the dialogue going. So I wanted to thank ASME for starting that. And I see in our room today, we have Selena Torona, who is who was part of that effort. I'm sorry that I called you out unnecessarily. There's it's it's a mix of library staff and some other staff from ASME. So I just want to acknowledge that before we move to the next item, which is our plan for, were there any questions about that before we move on?
No question. That sounds really cool.
Okay, our next item is our plan for reopening buildings to the public library building specifically. And we do have a little PowerPoint. Are you going to fire that up, Chayla?
Yep, I got it now.
And I know we get we get questions every day, and I'm sure as trustee members, you get questions from the community to when are the libraries going to open? When the library is going to open? And initially, and we're going way back to March now. I don't think any of us anticipated the closure lasting this long. And at that time, we kind of figured we would line up when when schools were ready to reopen, and we kind of use that as our benchmark, we'll be ready to open right there to support, you know, the kids when they're back in school. And those of you who have been following what's happening in schools in the Bay Area, it's not likely that too many schools will actually have Those of you who have been following what's happening in schools in the Bay Area, it's not likely that too many schools will actually have in-person instruction coming up in the fall. So if that's still our benchmark, I don't know that we're going to open the libraries anytime soon. But that doesn't mean we haven't been preparing all along. So, uh, do, do you want to walk through the PowerPoint, Chayla? All right. I'll, I'll, Chayla's been working with a phenomenal subcommittee of library staff to develop, uh, plans for opening a library. And we've already made some great physical improvements. So go ahead and take it, Chayla.
So yeah, definitely in the vein of living documents. As Joseph said, you know, we want to make sure that we're ready when we need to be ready, but we actually don't know when that is. So, so the team of, um, library staff from all, all of our four locations and from different roles within the library have been meeting and looking at research and what other libraries are doing, what other businesses are doing. So the next phase of currently, we're doing curbside service and we're doing mailing still. Um, and then we're also doing virtual programming. The next phase would be some kind of, um, controlled access for the public. And the goal is, um, definitely safety, safety for the public, safety for the staff. So, um, in, in looking at that, where, um, we started with training staff and, um, uh, one, one of the librarians put together a really good presentation, um, on how COVID is spread, how to stop COVID from being spread, how to recognize symptoms, to make sure everyone is up to speed. I think pretty much everyone is glued to their news feed. So they probably already are, but just to ensure. And then, um, implementing hygiene procedures, um, we have, our supplies have been provided. We have masks, we have gloves, we have hand sanitizer and of course soap and water. Um, and we even have some, uh, some shields for people to wear. We're, uh, obviously going to need to have social distancing or physical distancing between visitors, between staff and between staff and visitors. Um, so kind of each part of that requires some different arrangements. We're adding hygiene panels. Um, this public works was, was kind enough to do that for us. And I actually have some pictures. They turned out beautifully. Um, and then as I mentioned, um, masks and, and other PPE increased cleaning and sanitizing, um, our custodial staff, um, are doing a very thorough job each day. And then once we are open, um, we're going to need to be doing, um, some additional cleaning between visitors of, of high-touch areas. Um, and then of course, safe handling of library materials. So there's been lots of discussion at all, um, at the national level, at the state level, and of course within PLS. So physical distancing and, and hygiene. The, the way that, one of the main ways that we're going to be able to, to ensure the distancing, especially between visitors is by limiting the number. Um, and the only way to do that realistically is, is by creating an appointment system. So we want to ensure that if we do implement an appointment system, that it's not a barrier for access to anyone. So we will be able to, um, we'll be making the appointments online, but anyone who does not have that kind of access can call or even during curbside, they'd be able to make an appointment with a staff person. We would need to limit the duration of visits to, um, ensure that there's, you know, access for as many people as, as want to come in. And then also schedule in intercession time so that staff can wipe things down that need to be wiped down. And rotate jobs to keep everyone kind of fresh. We're, we're, we are, have actually reduced seating and increased spacing, um, with the furniture. None of our library furniture was made with, with COVID-19 in mind. So, um, we're taking furniture out and just making sure that there's adequate space. The most challenging has been the computer labs, which of course is one of the things that, that I know people are going to rely on the library for. We will be adding signage. Signage has been ordered, um, and then we'll probably be making some of our own, just to remind people about distancing and to create orderly queues and keep people, you know, in front of the hygiene panels. And then lastly, I, I mentioned the glass panels that were installed. And I think I do have a picture. All four libraries now have them and the, some of that black stuff is tape because it just is still drying, but they, they are actually really, I think aesthetically not at all displeasing and hopefully won't, you know, detract from the welcome feel that we want to have in each of the libraries. So. But it will protect us from sneezes and coughs. So staff are currently, of course, required by the city to wear face coverings. Whether the library is open or not, whenever they're working in a, in a building and there's other people there. It creates a little bit of a challenge around people taking their meal breaks, but otherwise, um, everyone's been very compliant and everyone's super careful. We're, library visitors will be required to wear face coverings. We will have, um, disposable ones available if, if people don't have them when they, when they arrive. Gloves are worn by staff when they're handling the recently returned materials. Um, and then of course we have, um, hand sanitizer and hand washing facilities. And then as I mentioned, that we have some face shields, um, although everyone said they fogged up. Increased sanitizing and cleaning, the custodial staff, um, are doing this daily, um, at each of our libraries. Um, they have a whole process they go through. We're also going to be adding some, we have, um, at each of our libraries, we have like a dispenser of foam hand sanitizer. We're going to be increasing the number of those so that, you know, there's always one nearby if you need it. Um, and then making sanitizing wipes available. We do, we have a lot of things that people touch. So, so we want to make sure that we're cleaning those between users. We are arranging our staff areas so that we have a dedicated station for things that are recently returned, kind of like a, a dirty station, to avoid any cross-contamination. And staff are required to, to wash or sanitize their hands between, if they've handled any of that newly returned materials. We are, we have a virus side that's been provided by our custodial staff. So we can wipe down all the high-touch surfaces, um, between users. And we're covering things that might be damaged by the frequent cleaning. I, I just saw that, um, delivered recently was our covers for keyboards, the mice in the public computer lab, covers for the screens for the self-checkout machines. Um, and then we're also, uh, removing some of the things that are non-essential that would be too difficult to clean. We have a lot of little manipulatives and, and little educational toys that, that just seem like they're, they're, um, going to pose more of a hazard, um, than, than they need to, as well as newspapers, which is unfortunate because a lot of people do, do use them. Um, and then we're going to, that we have our current magazines and covers. We're going to just have those available for checkout. This actually recently, um, had a change to it. So there, there is a, a project that's been established to do research on how the virus behaves on different, specifically library materials. Um, and so the first phase of the process, project has been completed and they tested the, the most common materials. So a, a, a hardcover book, a softcover book, pages inside a book, and then the Mylar jackets that we put on the outside of books as well as DVD cases. And so they, they inoculated them all with the virus and tested. So they found, um, and you can see on this chart here, that, um, that this attenuation was, was a way to make material safe by setting them aside essentially for, for three days was a safe period. Very recently, they did a, the second phase of the study and found particularly with, um, I think glossy pages that are stacked, that it can take a little bit longer. So there's been a discussion amongst, um, the various libraries and, and we're, we're probably shifting to go to 96 hours. Not that we consider this to be a high risk, but just that we would always prefer to err on the side of caution. So it's a whole, um, setup where we have, um, materials. They do get checked in, so they do have to be handled by someone in gloves and then they're put into bins and those bins are labeled by date. And they're set aside, um, so that, um, we can ensure what, by the time they're put back on the shelf or sent out to another life, to another library or given out to a patron, that they are safe. So we will also have to make sure once, um, we have patrons inside the building that anything that they've touched that they, they don't check out also gets put in this quarantined bin process. So I'm very grateful to have, um, you know, the, you read a lot of research about the, the virus, but this was something that was directly applicable to libraries and how libraries operate. So we fully intend to continue the current curbside and mail service that we are offering now. It's, uh, been extremely popular. We, we book up every week. This week we have some construction going on and, and we were not able to provide it, but we're already booked up for next week. It's a, it's a pretty labor-intensive process. It's, it's a very space-intensive process. So we're looking at ways that we can, um, maybe make that a little more efficient, a little quicker, um, for staff, but it's definitely something we've got nothing but positive feedback from patrons about that. And we want to continue to be able to offer that so that people who don't want, need to come in, they don't, um, feel comfortable coming in, would be able to access, um, all of our library materials. So. That is our plan and stop sharing here. And see if there's any questions.
Hi, Chayla. Thank you for the updates. Um, I do have a few questions. As you know, we're looking to open up. Do you guys, will you guys have like some type of employee like screening procedure? When, uh, team members come in, kind of like a checklist to ensure they're not sick when they're entering?
So. Oh, thank you.
There's an entirely a whole separate set of reopening policies, um, coming out of the human resources office. It hasn't been published yet, but it, I've seen the draft of it and does include measures for making sure employees, um, come to work healthy and propose, uh, temperature checks and, and those kinds of things. So that's, that's another very intensive, uh, document. Separate from the libraries. That would apply, uh, citywide.
Um, and then for patrons, obviously we, we, we wouldn't be able to put them through a questionnaire, but do we have signage? Or can we get signage that says, you know, if you're sick and you have these symptoms, do not enter?
I, I noticed that at the Trader Joe's last time I was there. And, and yeah, we, we, we're, um, still in the process of determining the signage. We want to make sure it's not overwhelming so that people do read it, but that seems like a good thing to include.
And then how, I know that the ordinance changes like so frequently. So for right now, um, it kind of looks like, you know, people shouldn't meet unless there's like 10 or 12 people at a time. And I know that it's different for businesses. So I know that the libraries would probably, you know, be handled like a business, but what, um, what's the plan for the capacity? Like, will we have like some type of like capacity worksheet that determines, you know, how many we're going to let in at a time to ensure there's social distancing?
I think we're going to start off with, um, utilizing a, an appointment system, which will necessarily, you know, keep the number to a certain capacity. It will probably be two, two capacities. The, the public computers, which we've had to remove half of them in order to create the, the adequate six feet of space. Um, and then for, for people who are browsing and, and other things that, yeah, definitely a, a, a smaller number of people. I think a library, um, unlike a business, sometimes people, you know, they come in, they need a quiet space to read and study and they will spend a full eight hours, um, in the library happily. And so it's relying on people to just naturally kind of come in, conduct their business and leave. I think people could be waiting a lot longer. That's why we, we are proposing a, an appointment system, at least initially.
So for the appointment system, how many appointments are we taking at a time?
This can vary from library to library. One, one of the standard things people use is square footage of the facility. Libraries are different though, because there's stuff inside the building that, that will attract people and people naturally cluster if they're all want to, you know, five people want to get into the new fiction books. So it's going to take some monitoring. I don't know that we're going to come with an absolute number. It, it's going to be difficult and I would recommend not using just square footage of the facility. But clearly that, you know, ceremony is going to be able to have more people in it than Bay Shore, just because there's more space in there. But I don't know that we're going to have an absolute, I think it's going to, you know, the absolute numbers will be easier for the computer uses because there is a fixed number of computers in there, but for the open stack areas, it might be a little bit more difficult to come up with that ideal number. And it may take time trial and error to, you know, find the sweet spot.
Thank you.
Well, that, that concludes that report. And, and I will, and I will end by saying, you know, you're, you're going to get the questions, when are libraries open? There is not a library open in San Mateo County. I don't know of any library open in the Bay Area. And I will, I will go out on a limb and make this commitment. Daly City's libraries won't be the first to open. We'll, we'll open when it's safe. And, and I think what will happen is all the libraries will celebrate and open together, you know, within the same week or so. When the time is right. And it's just not quite been, uh, the right time, especially the last couple of weeks have been really scary.
Are we going to keep the same hours through all the libraries? Same operation hours? And same days?
I, I wish I had an, that, that would be the ideal. It, it may be a matter of easing into the reopenings rather than doing just flipping the switch and everything's open the way it was. Uh, I will say staffing might be a little challenging at first because we've been closed so long. I'm gonna guess that we may have lost some of our regular part-time folks that have been out of work this entire time. They have maybe have gone on to find other jobs. So, um, as we have a target date in mind, we're going to have to assess the, uh, resources we have to open all four libraries at once. But that would be the ideal, absolutely.
Yeah, appreciate it. That was a really good presentation. I feel fear safe if, it sounds like you guys covered everything, the sanitizing and everything.
I will add too, that as of today, every single budgeted library, full-time library position is filled, which that's miraculous. It's, it's so rare in the last eight years that we've actually had a full complement of staff. The unfortunate thing is the libraries are closed, but, um, it does put us in a better position to open all four libraries, having all of the full-time positions filled.
Thank you.
Yeah. Cool questions. Um, is it, is it cool to get this presentation? I, I just want to have the notes. I think, I think you all put something very easy to follow. Um, it was really, it was really helpful kind of short notes for any community questions we would get. And then I think in terms of, and I know I'm glad to hear that the opening is still in the future. I think there's still a lot going on. I think that's real. Just curious if you all are also thinking about, um, something around like the air circulation, like keeping windows open as some of the precautionary measures to take. I've been, I've just been hearing from like other public places that that's something that folks are considering. I know for, for my organization, like opening our windows at the offices is some of the protocols. And that's also been recommended. So just curious if that's even possible for us to think about as we start opening libraries. At least as we, for the first.
That's a really good suggestion. Even before the pandemic hit, we planned to replace the H-trac system at the Westlake Library. It, you know, it's 15 years old. It was not doing your job circulating here. We got four brand-new air handling units on the roof of Westlake Library. That should help that out. There's also some windows that can be opened at the back. The rest of the libraries, I think, don't have windows that open. Well, there's some high windows at the Bay Shore Library. John Daly Library.
Windows are non-operable and.
But, but for, um, for War Memorial, or excuse me, the John Daly Library and for the Westlake Library, you know, that's definitely something considered. We're all looking forward to the day when the air is circulating through Westlake Library. And it's been a very long, painful construction project over at Westlake Library. So.
Would this presentation be, um, available for the public to view it on our website, on the library website?
Yeah, and the actual PowerPoint presentation is a link with, and, and it's, it's not the most intuitive. It is in a link on the agenda from the city's website, but maybe we can place it in a more prominent place on, on the daily, on the library part of the website. And of course, you know, if, if you didn't find it on the website, we can certainly email, email it out. And I don't know if the preferences, email it as a PDF or a, uh, an actual PowerPoint.
So the public, it doesn't have access. It has to be.
The public does have access to it. I think we just need to place it in a more prominent spot on the website where, where they'll find it. Cause you got to kind of dig into the agenda and click on the link to open up the presentation, but it's there right now. It was there last week even. With the exception of the one update, because that information. Because that information that Jayla gave you about the ninety-six hours is brand spanking new. It is the buzz, it is the buzz of libraries in the last two days, and it's very controversial. Some think ninety-six hours is too much, and they want to stick with the seventy-two hours. But it looks like the ninety-six hour people are winning the, winning the fight.
Can it be on a separate, on a separate topic or separate subject, saying reopening procedures? Or something like that? So it will make it easier for the public to to tap into it?
I I think we, the name, I think it's a good plan for reopening library. That I think it just needs to be, it needs to live somewhere where people will find it a little bit easier. And I think on the homepage of the library's website is probably a good place for it. And we'll share it with you. And I suppose if if we could even incorporate it through social media and direct people to it.
My only concern is that people will think that we're starting this right now.
Yeah, but yeah. Yeah, the timing is kind of weird, because if we had a definite date to open, it would make more sense to let people know what they're in for. But yeah, Chila's right, we might be getting people's hopes up, like the library is gonna open next week, because we've got this plan. But yeah, may maybe, maybe we'll stick with putting it somewhere accessible on the library webpage.
And we we also have a document for for people that are currently utilizing the curbside service that just kind of highlights the the safety protocols that we're using for that, because people have asked. So we should probably include that as well.
For the tables, do you guys have dividers from one patron to another, like shield and stuff like that? I mean, the class, plastic or whatever, like what they use it now?
No, we don't. We we, if you saw in the presentation, we did surround all of the counters, the main counters in the libraries. But in between the public spaces, there are not dividers. And that's part of the reason we'd be having fewer computers, so that we don't have people sitting close together. And that doesn't mean we won't get them in the future. It's something actually we've discussed, might be a good time to segue into the next item. And it's something we've actually discussed with the Daily City Public Library Associates about needs for making improvements to the library in wake of the pandemic.
There's a lot of businesses that have sensed an opportunity. So I I regularly get emails advertising different solutions. But I know that materials are a little harder to come by, because everyone's doing the same thing.
Okay, I think that concludes the the report for reopening the library. President Logartan, for meeting back to you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is a report from D C P L A. Welcome, Victoria. Thank you for joining.
Thank you for having me. I just wanted to say that, again, we're, the Board of Directors of the D C P L A is just really impressed with everything that the library has done to step up for our community during this time. I know it hasn't been easy. So we've been trying to figure out ways that we could support that. And recently, we've given two new grants to the library. We had a grant of three thousand five hundred that was awarded to us by the Danford Fisher, sorry, Danford Fisher Hannig Foundation. And that is for the Summer Learning Challenge, the performer and everything that they've had. Quite a few impressive things I've been paying attention and my kids are planning on doing the Harry Potter trivia. I think that's tomorrow night. So we've got that. And then we gave a second grant of three thousand from that we we are passing along that we earned from Philanthropic Ventures Foundation. And that's to provide additional Chromebooks and Wi-Fi hotspots available for checkout. That if you remember, that is something that we had provided in the past. But Chila let us know that, you know, there's even more demand now. And and I would imagine if they are going to have to reduce the number of public-use computers in the libraries, it'll be even more useful to get library Chromebooks and Wi-Fi hotspots that people can check out. So we, you know, we've got three thousand, which I think Chila said will pay for around six. And we are seeking additional funding as well, because I think the more we can get, the better. So, you know, we really probably, I imagine we couldn't have too many. As, you know, she said they've gotten a lot of use. So everything that that we've already provided is, has been well utilized. And so we have also, we're we're really, because we can't do events right now, we're focusing on getting grants that we can give to the library to support all of this, including, like we said, the the furniture. So, you know, we're we're pursuing those. It's just a matter of spending as much time as we can to throw the net wide and see who we can find, who is willing to, you know, to listen to our our case for why we need that. So we will definitely keep you abreast of the situation and let you know whenever we do secure some funds for that. So I think, I think that's that's everything that I had. But thank you all for just, I know we're all giving thought to what we can do. Oh, one one more thing. I I've spoken to some of the trustees, you know, as the D C P L A is not really in a position to make statements or, you know, provide policy or anything. But as far as the Black Lives Matters movement, we are very much interested in in if there are things that require funding. We would, you know, we would love to hear about them. We're open to any funding ideas, anything that the library, you know, could use some help with. But in particular, that's something that that I personally am interested in. So please do let us know if if there is any, anything that you need extra funding that the city isn't able to provide. We would definitely at least hear it and see what we could do to support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Thank you so much for supporting us and helping us out with fundraising initiatives and even bringing some ideas to the table. Does anybody have any questions for Victoria?
I don't have any questions, but I did want to uplift some of the work that the librarians are doing that were uplifted earlier around like some of the anti-racism work. I feel like what some of the, some of that, like even both like the library work and both the internal work that staff may need to better do the racial equity work that they want to do through their libraries. I think any resources we can direct there would be really helpful. Yeah, I think that's one idea. And then I'm also thinking about, I'm wondering, you know, as we think about opening for COVID, I know it's gonna be a while, but looking into the future, if there are, is there a possibility some of these grants could go to support with that? Whether it be, you know, additional services to maintain like the cleanliness of our libraries and hygiene and maintain safety? I think there's also possibilities for some of that grant money in response to COVID.
Yeah, I I think really, you know, any anything that the library ever needs, they're more than welcome to present it to us. And and, you know, we'll see what what we can do. So, you know, any, really, we're interested in in anything that our library feels like would be beneficial to our community.
What Teresa was saying of like those barriers and maybe.
Yeah, the shields.
Yeah.
I mean, some of that, I think the the city is planning on providing. But if there's anything that is outside of the budget, we're we're definitely here to entertain any ideas.
Thank you, Victoria. Thank you so much.
If I could navigate my computer. So something that I wanted to kind of bring to the table is how we could support remotely as trustees. So I, you know, wanted to bring this up. And, you know, feel free to chime in. Any ideas that you all have would be greatly appreciated. As we move on to this new normal of working remotely, supporting remotely, it doesn't mean that we can't interact, right? We've been doing the virtual meetings for some time now. So I just have a few ideas that I wanted to bring up. I know that Sarah is doing her video project. And she's actually asked me to, you know, do a video for financial literacy. So I was gonna, you know, really try to work on that, even if it's not me, maybe getting a banker to help with that video. I remember, I believe it was Teresa saying that we should do kind of like a lesson on like wearing masks for like health and safety. So just wanted to see if anybody was up to make a video to help out with that. I think that that would be something in light of COVID that would really help Sarah.
Anybody?
I I know that Karen with her Baby Pounce Storytime has done a, done one on on handwashing.
Oh, cool.
With the littlest one.
I think since now there's for the parking, parking rags, that they have some summer classes going on. I wonder if we can put in an idea to Mr. Korenchi, since he's here with us, to something that any of the class would like to promote that part. To have like a, you know, like a, a fun way. I know one of the, I know maybe added to one of their programs that they're doing, like to have a quick clip, a mini clip of wearing, a fun way to wear face coverings and handwashing. You know, maybe have like a, a group to maybe compete, to have some sort of incentive for, you know. And we, Board of Trustees, we can be the judge of that and see who's, who's the winner. Who will be the winner for for that, and we can promote it.
Yeah, just something, just some ideas to kind of help Sarah out with, you know, her project. And, you know, promoting our new normal would be great. So we can kind of talk about that as well. Before, we were, we were visiting the libraries, you know, that was, you know, something that we regularly did. Since I joined the board, I I found it very heartwarming to kind of, you know, be able to speak to staff, see how the branches were running, be able to speak to patrons. We used to do like our coffee with trustees. So it sounds like it'll be a while before we get to actually visit the libraries. I know once we open up, we can definitely like make an appointment, but I want that time to really go to the patrons, right? And so I'm asking maybe like the trustees to still connect with Patricia, with Sarah, with Karen, right? And even Sheila, like remotely. Maybe we can set some time via Zoom or even just like a phone call as a remote check-in. Would the trustees be up for that?
I'm just wondering what the check-in will be about. Do you have any specific areas to cover?
I mean, we can talk about that, but I think more of it is more like for support, just to see if there's, you know, because even though we can't visit, right? They still may have things on their mind that they may need our support with. And it doesn't even have to be, you know, the frequency in which we were. I think we were trying to do it, you know, once a month. It doesn't have to be that frequent, but just, you know, to check in, to see what support they need.
Would somebody provide it? I'm up for it, but for me, I would ask what their availability times and what time that it would be best for to arrange that. And it's something that anybody will set a zoom for me, or do I need to set the zoom for, for any, for anybody?
And ensure that that it's product compliant, of course.
Yeah, I have no problem. I would love to reach out too. We just had to assign which library each of us will be able to check in with.
Yeah, that says added support. Another thing that I wanted to see if we were, you know, we were very, you know, involved in, you know, community events, pre-COVID. So we, I I saw that the libraries went ahead and helped with the food drive. So I'd like to see if the trustees would like to volunteer alongside Ms. Teresa in helping out. I think it's very important for us to support our community. And we can do it together. So just an idea to support that. How long is the food drive going to be continuing, Teresa?
Um, starting, um, starting in August, we're only going to do, I was going to announce that, second Saturdays and fourth Saturdays of the month. So starting in next month, that's where we're going to, twenty-two Saturdays a month. Most of our work, yeah, because mo- most of the volunteers are back to work and they're working remotely from home. So we cut down to those two Saturdays, second Saturday and fourth Saturday.
Is that Bay Shore or Jefferson?
Jefferson.
Yeah, if you can send us some invitations, Teresa, and then, you know, see if we can all possibly join. Is it still the Thursday and Saturdays?
For?
Or the food drive?
Yeah, we're still going for this month, it's still Thursdays and Saturdays. So I can send you an invite right now to everybody. I'm gonna invite everybody. You're free to welcome and come from eight to one.
Okay.
So you're welcome to come anytime, Thursdays and Saturdays.
So yeah, I encourage all of us to join Teresa in helping the community out. And it'd be nice if we could all go together at some point.
Thank you so much.
Um, let's see. Also, I'd also wanted to talk about, you know, advocating for contributions to D C P L A. Victoria has been tremendous in supporting our efforts for, from fundraising to posting on social media. And I get, you know, things in the mail from D C P L A. So I encourage all of the trustees to be advocates, getting friends and family, you know, to sign up and really let them know the importance of what D C P L A does for the community. So just wanted to do that. If there's anything, you know, if you want to post anything like recent, Victoria, we're happy to share that. And then also encourage other people to donate as well. Um, so I wanted to talk about also the B L M statement. So did we want to create our own as trustees? Or were we gonna be aligned with, you know, the live document that the Daily City Public Library has prepared? And then just kind of, you know, make edits?
I think for me, I would want to be aligned with the libraries. I feel like those, I mean, I feel like the libraries are who we represent and who we support. So for me, I would, I feel very strongly about just working on that statement and making sure that our libraries feel ownership over it and just being like a strong advocate ally with them. Yeah, I I agree with what Teresa was saying earlier about, you know, our body is kind of different. And so I feel like our role is to be more in support of what the libraries are doing or giving feedback. And like putting out a strong solidarity statement, like I'm down to, to be really clear about putting in my endorsement for that statement. Also, I think I just wanted to also name, I know you voted on it, but we didn't get a chance to hear from trustee Vivar and Dallas earlier about the statement. So I'd also love to hear your all's thoughts about that, yeah.
Yeah, I think for me, like, I definitely want to be in line with the librarians as well. I do want to mention that the city council is having a special meeting tomorrow at five PM about a Black Lives Matter resolution. And so I think it would be very, very helpful if we were. And so I think it would be very, um, very helpful if we were able to attend and then see how we can also, um, align with the city council or, you know, like challenge, challenge them to, um, you know, like have something that is more aligned with us as well. And so I definitely want to, um, take a, take a second look at that statement that the librarians have made. And then also, um, attend the meeting tomorrow to just make sure that everything is, um, solid and aligned with, you know, what we really value.
I agree. So, um, Joseph, do we have to have, do you recommend that we do a motion to approve, um, aligning with, um, the Daily City Public Libraries or that endorsement prior to was enough?
I, I think the endorsement.
Okay.
Was sufficient. I think it's kind of implied.
Okay, awesome. Um, so let's go ahead and move on to, um, announcements and communications. Do we have any additional announcements and or communications? I know we're right at time, but what have you got?
Oh, I want to introduce again Selena Torono, who has become an absolute social media superstar in the past few weeks. Um, and I want her to, to share with you what, what she's been doing, represent the library in Daily City across the world. She's amassed a huge following with the program she's running. And she looks very nervous, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn to her and, and let her share her success with you.
Okay, hi, um, Justine, I'm seeing your stuff. It is me and Patricia, to be clear. Patricia is our like fearless leader with communications and does such an excellent, excellent job with everything that we do. So, yeah, definitely pointing her out too. Um, I'm mostly on the Facebook side, but, um, yeah, so last month or about a month ago today, I started doing a bilingual Quintuhan on our, uh, Facebook. So it's been a bilingual Tagalog English storytime, kind of featuring some children's songs and books from the library's collection. And, you know, speaking of ways that you guys can get involved, if you guys, you know, have any interest in participating with that, in case you guys are familiar with any of the songs or stuff that I do, I would be totally welcoming or welcome to having you guys like read a book or something. Tagalog is not my first language, so it is, it is rough, but yeah, I'd be happy to have anyone join in. Um, I recently reached out to TFC because they just picked up a program called the Bahai Book Club, where they are spotlighting, um, Filipino-American authors and the books that they have made. So I'm looking into that. I'm trying to like reach out to any groups in the area. So I've tried checking with undiscovered, um, I've gone on a couple of Filipino groups locally and on Facebook to kind of get that connection there. So if you guys have any ideas for how I could further engage with, you know, our Philippine ex-community, I'd really appreciate it. And yeah, that first storytime got over eight thousand views, so yeah.
Clearly it struck a chord with the community, definitely, so.
She plays ukulele, she sings, it's entertaining, it's fun to watch. I don't, my Tagalog is not that great either, but, um, I find it very entertaining to watch. I would definitely, uh, if you haven't seen it, I would definitely encourage you to take a peek.
The first and third Saturday, so it doesn't interfere with the food distribution.
Are there any other languages that we can tap into as well?
Yeah, there's all, there's all kinds of languages spoken in Daily City. I think there's forty-eight or so languages spoken here. Um.
I mean, we're talking about Black Lives Matter.
Right, yeah.
You know.
More inclusive, I, I hear you.
All colors matter.
Absolutely, um.
So we should, we have a resolution, I feel that what we preach is what we need to teach.
I agree.
And what we teach is what we need to preach and we need to walk it. So that's a really good example. I appreciate you, Selena, that's really beautiful. But at the same time, I feel left out for my language that nobody has reached out to even to any, or the Chinese, or the Permese, or any other languages that we have there. We should acknowledge all those languages.
I agree. Um, and we'll certainly work on coming up for, with a platform. Uh, yet our, our, our staff is incredibly diverse and talented and wonderful and what Selena's doing is amazing and the success it's having is amazing. Um, we do have other bilingual staff that, that might, um, inter- get, engage. Uh, we have done, uh, Chinese and Spanish before, but, um, you know, are, are, we're kind of limited. We don't have a, uh, Somali-speaking staff person. Um, but, but we have one on the board of director trustees, so we can certainly.
All you have to do is ask.
I, I think I'm asking you right now, will you, will you?
Well, because I mentioned, if I didn't say it, no, and then nothing will be asked.
Yes, no, you consider yourself asked. Uh, we'll, we'll see if we can come up with a plan to, and, and not, not just Somali, but yeah, clearly there's, there's lots of.
Yeah, Tongueeans, so we have Brazilians that is dominating Daily City.
Absolutely.
Portuguese. Spanish.
It's, it's a melting pot. It's, it's fun to go through the stores and listen to all the languages spoken here. It's really, really, I think that's one of the, the coolest things about Daily City is its first diversity. And yes, we've got a long ways to go, but I don't want that to take away from the fact that Selena is doing an amazing job. And I think she's setting the bar high for all those who follow, but, uh.
Yeah.
Plenty of room.
I think just to uplift to like that state, that BLM statement did have something about community partnerships. So, you know, I think if that's a commitment that we're making moving forward, um, I think it's an opportunity to start building on those community partnerships. And I think if there's some support wanted from the libraries to figure out what those partnerships could be, um, I wanna propose maybe we can have that as a conversation at the next trustee meeting to really just put out some ideas out there or, you know, just like pull from our networks and give some suggestions on who the library can partner with. Especially around language access.
That's a fine idea.
I agree.
Yeah, you know, we, we try, but clearly we, we fall short in representing every language spoken in Daily City. That's definitely something to work towards. Um, a couple other announcements. Um, one, this is gonna be my last ever board of trustees meeting. Um, I'll be retiring before you guys meet again, so I just wanna take this time to thank you guys. You've been an amazing bunch. I love your commitment to Daily City. Keep up the good work. And the other thing I wanted to say is Stephen Stolti is also sitting very quietly and he's gonna talk about the month of August and, uh, transition, um, after my departure. Take it away, Stephen.
All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Stephen Stolti. I'm the Assistant City Manager. I know some of you, I don't know some of you all that well, and I'm really looking forward to getting to know you better, um, over the next few months. So Joseph is retiring in September. That gives us a little bit of time here, um, to work on the transition. I'm, I'm here at your meeting to let you know that the city manager's office is going to support your commission, uh, your board, um, after Joseph retires. So we're, we're here for you. Um, I know that we're definitely gonna miss Joseph. He's been here for a very long time with Daily City and has so much knowledge about the history of our city and just, you know, our organization in particular. So we're really gonna miss him, but I wanna reassure all of you that you're gonna be supported even after he retires. Um, so whether it's me or my colleague Leilani Ramos, um, we'll be here at your meetings to help you out. Um, and we're also going to eventually be recruiting, um, a replacement for Joseph. Um, but we're not going to do it right away. We're going to take a really measured approach, um, especially given the pandemic. So maybe next year, early next year, we'll re-open that recruitment. But really in the meantime, reach out to us in the city manager's office. Um, I hope we can, um, talk frequently, email, phone, whatever is convenient for you and, um, we'll support you. Um, for August, I do wanna make the announcement that we are not having any city council meetings. We're not going to have any commission meetings. We're not gonna have any board meetings. We're going dark that month. And it's just really important for us in the city to have a little respite at this time. And, um, I hope that we can just follow the lead of the city council and, and go dark that month with, uh, the library board too. And we'll pick right back up in September, um, fresh right then and there. But, um, really my message today is that please reach out to me if you, if you need something. Um, and I can share my contact information with you all through Joseph and that, um, your, your board will continue. Um, you'll just have different faces during your meeting going forward. Are there any questions or anything?
Can you, um, trustee Dos mentioned the meeting tomorrow, the city council. I understand you have to be pre-registered to participate, so can you just maybe, uh, describe how to go about that process?
So typically our city council meetings, we, we partnered with a company called Open Gov that allows for online public comment. This special meeting tomorrow, the Zoom is going to be open to the public. So if you do wanna join, just remember to register in advance. You'll get a special personalized link. So just don't wait for, you know, thirty seconds before the meeting to do that. Um, just make sure that, uh, you sign up. And all the information has been posted on our social media, um, with the link on where to register. But if you need it, I can give it to you as well.
Thank you, Stephen. Joseph, I can't believe it. Um, you know, when I joined this board, you were very influential for me and, um, you've always been there to support us and help us out, understand things when we didn't, you know. And so, um, just wow and thank you and congratulations. You have served Daily City for how long now? Putting you on the.
It'll be a little more than twenty-four years.
Wow, that's twenty-four years, um, and.
Seven of the best years of my life, no. Bad joke.
Um, I remember seeing your kids at like the meetings, right? Um, accompanying you everywhere, um, when I was signing up for like a hall, I remember you, you know, trucking your daughter along. So no, um, I know your family's totally grown up in this area and, um, we wish you well. Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you so much.
And I know I'm off the agenda, but I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm so grateful to have met you and we appreciate everything you've done for us.
Thank you, President Leguerta. And yeah, I, I will say that you, you've met my kids and, and that's, that's really what pushed this decision. Um, the future being so uncertain and leaving them home pretty much alone all summer and with distance learning at school about to start, I, I just wanna be there for them. And the fact that I can be there for them, I'm very grateful for the opportunity to, to support my family.
And congratulations, Joseph, on this decision and this next chapter for you.
Thanks.
Well, I'm glad I read to you for the last time, Mr. Koren at, um, St. Roberts.
That, I think, you know, that, that, I will say, this is a true story. I, I ran into trustee Faua Poa at a place that neither of us, I think, I, it was, it was like the uni- universe talking to me that I was there for somebody else's retirement thing. And the words that were spoken about knowing when the time is right really resonated with me. And then I'm standing there in deep thought and Commissioner Faua Poak, it was so unreal. It was, it was surreal even and, uh, yeah, that's, that was almost the instant that, that I had my decision made because it just seemed like the universe was trying to direct me to that decision.
Well, I thank you for your service. I think I've only known you since I became, came on board. And I appreciate your knowledge and especially the history of Bayshore that you gave us over there at the Boys and Girls Club when we met. That was amazing and I never knew and I'm grateful that you were able to share that because now it makes me feel proud as a Bayshore resident, you know, to know that. And all that knowledge that you have about the history of Daily City and especially Bayshore, it's beautiful. So congratulations and wherever your next destination, may the Lord be with you and your family. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we are over time, but before we go, um, I'd like to start the agenda building um, for our next meeting in September. So, um, I like, um, I wanna put on the agenda first, um, Justine's idea of ideas to support partnership. Um, you mentioned partnership with language access, but, um, did you want to make it a little bit more specific, Justine? No, I think I just wanted to address some of the feedback and make sure we made, we had some space for that. Um, I'm definitely open to broadening if there are other types of partnerships that the library would be interested in. But definitely wanna focus in on the language access part, um, because of all the feedback today. Thank you. Um, next on the agenda building, I wanna make sure that we talk about the COVID updates. Um, too mu- as, you know, updates are coming fluidly, I wanna make sure that we have a conversation on kind of where we're at, at that time. I also would like to talk about the BLM statement. Um, just in case there are some edits to it, we can reread it. And, um, like Joseph said, it's a live document, so we can make changes to it. Um, so if we can talk about that as well. And then also, um, some follow-up to some things that I've mentioned. Um, you know, as we're talking about partnerships, any contributions to, um, Sarah's, um, video project would be really helpful. Um, also, um, you know, volunteering, following up on that, on how we are supporting, um, Teresa and also, um, a follow-up on, um, you know, how we're supporting DCPLA. So that's all I have. Does anybody have anything else to add? No, sounds good. Okay, so at seven sixteen, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Were you adjourned? I just wanna say we skipped over public comment, um, and I, I have, I have.
There is you without you.
I, I've been monitoring, um, the Open Town Hall portal and I report there are no public comments, but I didn't wanna skip over that item. That's all. Now you can adjourn.
Um, thank you, everyone, for joining. We appreciate you. Bye-bye.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, everyone. In September.